It's, uh, six o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call, roll call, starting on my right.
Mitch Glions, planning and zoning.
Mark Schneider, planning and zoning.
Jeff Patton-Fuss, San Diego Township.
Dalton Kiderling, Ouroc Township.
Francine Larson, Blue Hill Township.
Steve DeMules, Palmer Township.
Terrence Van Dyk, Clear Lake Township.
Bruce Avell, Big Lake Township.
Kathy Sims, Haven Township.
Butch Hassel, Avonia Township.
Gary Gray, Sherwin County Commissioner.
Lynn Wataschek, planning and zoning.
Carrie Winter, planning and zoning.
All right, um, I need to mention that this meeting is being recorded both, both audio and visual, and the Planning Commission is a recommending body. The items heard tonight at the Planning Commission Public Hearing will be heard by the County Board of Commissioners on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at nine o'clock a.m., and all comments from tonight will be forwarded to the County Board. Are there any changes to the, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, let's see, now we're looking at approving the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any changes to it?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number one, Brandon Kozak requesting a preliminary and final simple plat approval of MJ Acres consisting of one lot. PID four zero dash zero 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 one one dash three thousand, address twenty-two seventy-two hundred and twentieth, twentieth Avenue Southeast in section eleven, Palmer Township. It is in his agricultural zoning district. Uh, Mr. Glions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, Brandon Kozak is requesting a simple plat of one lot for MJ Acres. Uh, this is in Palmer Township. This is something we've been seeing, uh, happen often up in that area, splitting off the, uh, house from the farm, uh, ag land itself. This is, uh, so he's requesting to split off the one acre or the five acre lot from the seventy-two acres, which will leave the remaining meats and bounds. Uh, there's an existing house on the property. It was, uh, seventy-five, moved onto the property in two thousand and three, based off, uh, county records. Uh, septic was evaluated in two thousand and twenty-four and was, is compliant. A wetland delineation was completed and a notice of decision was approved on February sixth of this year. No wetland impacts are proposed. Uh, we did hear from, uh, MinDOT, since it's on Minnesota State Highway twenty-five, and they have no issues or concerns with the plat for MJ Acres, uh, from MinDOT. So, uh, County Surveyor has reviewed it. They have no issues. And, uh, Public Works has reviewed it. It is not on a county road, and they don't require park fees since there's an existing house. But with that, the applicant is in the audience and will answer any additional questions, or if you have any for me, I'm happy to answer any.
Are there any questions for staff? I have one.
Yep.
Uh, the proposed easement, I understand that's probably to accommodate the, the driveway to the south.
Correct. They are still gonna utilize access to the ag land with that, uh, current driveway. It is the same property owner right now, so they will record an easement to continue to use that access. Uh, since it's coming off twenty-five, it'll be difficult to get any additional.
Sure.
Accesses.
What it, what is that structure in the middle of that ag field?
They have a, is it the, uh, communication tower? There's a communication tower.
I see.
Middle of the ag field. If that's what you're just, uh, north of the woods or? North of the woods or on?
Uh, down kinda south central or s-
Cause there, yeah, there is a communication tower on the property, on the south, uh, portion of the property.
Is the applicant present?
He's right there.
What?
Please step up to the podium, please. Uh, recite your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Brandon Kozak. Uh, my address is eight zero four seven, Forty-seventh Street, Southeast St. Cloud.
Now, uh, do you understand the two recommended conditions and can you abide by them?
Yes.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
No, Palmer Township sees this as an opportunity to split that house away and still leave that, the, the majority of the property into ag. So, it, it, we do quite a few of them out there actually recently, cause, you know, some, somebody wants to, you know, the change of hands in ownership and nobody wants to live on there anymore and farm, so. It makes sense.
Sounds good. Uh, at this point, we'll open the public hearing. Is there an? Is there anyone that here to speak on the issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I would recommend approval with the two recommended conditions.
Second?
I'll second.
We don't have findings of facts on this, Julian, okay?
No.
Uh, with that, uh, I'll look for, uh, is there a motion to approve? If that's already been made, uh, we'll have a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is passed. Um, I suggest you be here at the, uh,
April fifteenth. Fifteenth.
Yeah, what, yeah, April seventh meeting.
Fifteenth.
Eighteenth?
Fifteenth.
Just checking.
Nine a.m.
Nine a.m. Agenda item number two. Mr. Schneider. Oh, I beg your pardon. Uh, Jennifer and Brian Hamm requesting a conditional use permit to use alternative elevation methods for a residential structure. It is on PID four zero dash zero zero four one seven dash zero zero seven zero, one one four one four, night forty-ninth Street. Uh, Clear Lake is the mailing address. It's in Palmer Township, Fairview Shores, Lot seven, section twenty-seven, Township thirty-five, Palmer Township, Ag District. Now, Mr. Schneider.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, board's packet included aerial photo, a letter from the applicant describing the project, a survey, building plans, one through four pages, septic letter and design, and site photos. Uh, Palmer Township heard this request on February eleventh, and they recommended approval of the request. Uh, this is Palmer Township's comments. The pilings will eliminate the need for bringing in fill, which will displace water and alter the natural flow for this area. The township feels this is best building method for utilizing established lots in the floodplain. The township also recommended a plan by the applicant for replacing trees that were taken down. It provides a healthy tree canopy to reduce runoff and lower phosphorus into the lake. Uh, so the applicant, just in response to the township comments, did obtain the necessary shoreline alteration permit and will, uh, do the necessary work for tree replacement. Uh, the town, DNR, uh, did comment, but they didn't have any issues with this project. Staff comments are as follows: The applicant's proposing to remove an existing cabin on the property and replace it with a new cabin, um, on pilings and a holding, and it'll be on a holding tank. The existing cabin is about five hundred and eight square feet. Uh, they'll be replacing the cabin with our minimum house size of seven hundred and twen- seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. Um, and they are also proposing to put a small deck on the project. The lot is one point or point one five acres. It's fifty-seven feet wide and a hundred and forty-seven feet deep. Uh, therefore, there's not sufficient space to build on this lot within the required setbacks of a hundred foot from the lake and sixty-seven foot from the road. To redevelop the lot, the applicant has requested and did obtain, uh, four variances on March thirteenth to, um, be able to rebuild the structure. So they had to get the CUP and variances to rebuild on this property. Uh, so the property is entirely within a designated flood fringe area with a hundred-year base flood elevation of nine sixty-nine. To comply with the requirement, um, all residential structures have to have a low floor at nine seventy, um, the regulatory flood protection elevation. Uh, the applicant's proposing to construct the cabin with an alternative method. Um, and I'll show you that method right here. So they're looking at using pilings. So in the floodplain district, you can build on fill. Um, but these alternative methods, you, these three different, or sorry, three different methods right here, all require conditional use permits. So the floodplain ordinance would allow somebody to bring fill and put the structure on that fill, but then they have to taper it out a distance of fifteen feet and has to comply with certain elevations, and it brings a lot of fill into the floodplain. Um, that's a permitted use, um, but on small lots like this, you can't typically taper it out. You couldn't get that fill to extend out fifteen feet. So the DNR has had these established alternatives, and that's what the applicant is looking, uh, for tonight, is approval of this conditional use permit to be able to do an alternative method of elevation. Uh, no garage is proposed to be constructed with this. The applicant's survey shows two parking stalls that comply with floodplain regulations for elevation. So you have to have vehicular access at a certain height, and they're able to comply with that. Uh, the project is, uh, sixteen point eight percent impervious surface, so they're under the twenty-five percent threshold, which is kind of a big factor when we're dealing with a board of adjustment. Um, and the applicant, as I stated earlier, has obtained the necessary shoreline alteration permit for the tree removal that was done prior to the project being approved. And with this, uh, conditional use permit, staff has five recommended conditions of approval. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, because this is, uh, probably the first time I think the board's seen a conditional use permit for an alternative of, alternative elevation method, so.
Are there any questions from the board for staff?
How far away from the lake is it? We said it's within the hundred feet, but how far away?
Um, they're gonna be right at fifty feet.
Okay.
So, the existing cabin was... Yeah, so they're, so basically they're just making sure that the cabin is outside the short impact zone, so right at fifty-one feet for the closest point. And this lake has that hundred foot setback.
Can you give us a little more information on figure three, four, and five?
Yeah. So there's three different methods of doing this alternative elevation. Um, one is kinda like, you know, a building on piers, on pilings, what you kinda think of maybe coastal areas.
Okay, got it.
Um, so it's basically water can go through there, you know, and that was kinda one of the comments that the township made, is it's not going to divert flow waters, it, what, flood, it's gonna, water's gonna rise up and it's gonna go down. And if you look at it, they have a regulatory flood protection elevation that RFP is at the bottom. Usually that's at the top of the floor elevation, but for this method of construction, FEMA says it has to be at the bottom. And then there's compacted fill, so there's another alternative method where basically you'd have to compact the soils underneath there, so they can't cave in. And I haven't seen that before.
And that doesn't require the tapering.
That doesn't require the tapering either.
Okay.
And then there's open flood proofing. And we see this actually kinda co- that's somewhat of a frequent way, frequent way of construction for low-value structures. Like if you think about a boathouse or something like that, we'll have these little vents in there that will allow floodwaters to come in, so it doesn't put pressure and cause a building to collapse. On low-value buildings, you don't have to get this condition and ease permit, but when it's for a residential structure, they do have to get the CUP.
Thank you very much.
So we've seen probably, this is probably the second one I've seen, uh, on the chain of lakes, and it's definitely a preferred method to help with the flood situation. And I think everybody, uh, that knows the Briggs Lake chain knows that there's, one day you can be, uh, having fun and the next day you're in seven feet of water. So, and this happens numerous times. So this would allow for that, for this not to impact any more fill to come on to the floodplain. We've had, and that's what most people are doing, they aren't looking at these alternatives to help. They're looking at putting, bringing in this fill. And we've had some massive houses being built with, they're just barely under the thousand, uh, square yards for, uh, for getting, uh, another permit. But they just, it, it, it displaces the water and it's usually to the neighbor's property. So, this is, uh, this is a good way to replace that cabin after probably seventy years, eighty years, and, uh, have a low impact on the floodplain.
Any other comments or questions?
I have an odd question about impervious surface. So, so underneath, would that be considered impervious surface?
Yes, it would. Yeah, so anything that, yeah, so decks, yeah.
It is a good question. It is a great question.
It, it's the runoff that, it's, you know, accelerating the rain runoff, so it hits something and it diverts. There we are, yeah. But, yeah, it's a good.
Just thinking about it being kinda soggy under there.
Is that, Steve, is this at risk of flooding every year?
Yes.
It is.
And it's not even just a spring flood, it's, uh, a big rain.
Big rain, okay.
Cause we're at the bottom of the, we're at the bottom end of the watershed.
Yep.
So everything's coming through there.
Just a quick comment from a natural resource standpoint, this is a, a really good alternative practice that we like to see, for sure.
So they can choose either three, four, or five?
Um, that's what they're, they could do any of those, and they've chosen to go with, um, three, so that's what we're moving forward with.
Is the applicant present? Please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Hamm, three oh three seven Cavell Avenue South, St. Louis Park.
Okay, um, and you understand the, the five recommended conditions and are able to comply with them?
I do.
Any questions of the applicant?
I think Jennifer has gone through the gauntlet on this one. I've seen, this is the third time I've seen her, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, her working with the county and, and the township and, and, uh, helping out with, uh, issues that we have on the lakes.
You guys are far from the worst part of it.
That's nice to know.
In there is a positive.
Okay, uh, if there are no questions for the applicant, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone out there to speak on this issue? Is there anyone, uh, wishing to speak on this issue? Is there anyone wishing to speak on this issue?
Close, move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I would recommend approval with the five recommended conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, I guess we will go through the findings of facts. Uh, Mr. Schneider.
Perfect. Uh, staff has prepared findings of fact. Uh, our comments are italicized, and the board can choose to accept those or modify them. Uh, first finding, that the conditional use permit will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for purpose already permitted or substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Uh, yes, this proposal will not adversely impact the use and enjoyment of properties within the vicinity. This lot has been developed with a cabin and septic for many years, and this proposal will allow that use to continue. The CUP will ensure that the project is compliant with county and state floodplain regulations.
Great. Number two, that the establishment of the CUP will not impede normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties vacant, or surrounding vacant properties for predominant, for uses predominant in the area.
Yes, the approval of the CUP will not impede normal and orderly development. It will help mitigate potential flood damage to the existing cabin and neighboring properties by allowing floodwaters to rise on and not be advert- adversely affected by the, uh, the need to bring fill into, uh, redevelop this lot.
Great. Number three, that adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or being provided for?
Yes, adequate utilities, access, and drainage are provided, uh, for the purpose use.
Uh, number four, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking, loading, space to serve the proposed use.
Yes, the applicant demonstrated that there was, is a sufficient parking on the site for the proposed use that will comply with floodplain regulations.
All right. Lastly, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent offensive odor, uh, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, and none of these will constitute a nuisance and control lighted signs and other lights in a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, the CUP allows for the rebuilding of an existing cabin. There will be a short duration during the construction that may cause a nuisance to the neighbors, but a long-term use of this property will not cause a disturbance to neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. This, uh, this, Ms. Hamm, this issue will be up in front of the town, County Board, uh, April fifteenth at nine a.m. We recommend that you be here, and we thank you for your patience. Agenda item number three. SV CSG Becker LLC, John and Lynette Golly are requesting an interim use permit for a solar farm. PID twenty dash zero zero one two nine dash four one zero zero, section twenty-nine, Clear Lake Township, Zoned Agricultural. Mr. Glions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a solar farm that has been brought before you, uh, before. And so CSG, SV CSG Becker, what they're requesting is a new IUP interim use permit, but it's specifically for, uh, the other one, uh, ownership change. So, on February sixth of this year, the, um, uh, solar farm owners were notified that they did submit a change of ownership by FedEx. However, it was not done in time. They failed to give the thirty days notice in advance of the ownership change. And did not provide notice by certified letter, therefore they needed to, uh, read, or redo their interim use permit, so that is why we are here. Clear Lake Township did comment. Township agrees with the ownership change as long as all other zoning requirements are met. So, just to go over it, SV CSG Becker LLC is still proposing to place a one milliwatt solar farm on this property. There are three solar farms on this property if, already on this one, so this would be the last one on the far west side. Nothing is proposed to change as far as the conditions that were already approved. One thing that would change is, since it hasn't been built yet, is that, uh, on a condition number thirteen, uh, being valid for thirty-five years, we would extend this to December thirty-first, twenty sixty. I think it was like twenty fifty-eight or twenty fifty-nine that it was, uh, proposed for. Uh, but with that, again, no changes. We've used the same packet as the, uh, first time around, and I am here to answer any questions, or the applicant is here as well to, uh, explain the reason for the ownership change.
Mr. Chair, I just happened to notice, Mark, if you can scroll down under the conditions. I think we do wanna strike one thing, and that is, keep going down, um, stop. It says must install six-foot-tall white pine and eastern red cedar trees along the north, south. I think we wanna strike east, cause there's a solar farm directly to the east, and west portion of the solar. I think that'll take care of that issue, because they've already pulled building permits on the property to the east.
And keep, if you keep reading, it'll say that trees will not need to be planted on the east side of the solar farm if they're already.
Then we could leave it if we'd like, sure. Sorry.
That's fine. Cause, yeah, that was done before that other one was built, and it has been constructed, so, yeah, either we can strike the rest or...
Whatever, either way it works.
I think it's fine.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate. We would, uh, Clear Lake Township would like to add a nineteenth condition, if that's, uh, allowable. We've got a couple of solar farms, or a few solar farms in the township that are in need of maintenance. Uh, solar panels are off the racks.
Really?
We have concerns as it might be a possible fire hazard. And also, it's obvious it would be a, uh, diminish the capacity or the productivity of the, of the solar arrays. And then, thirdly, aesthetics. You know, some of these solar farms, well, some of these solar operations are somewhat controversial within the community, and to see, uh, a solar garden in disrepair, uh, doesn't do the cause any good, so. Can we add a nineteenth condition to asking for monthly maintenance inspections?
Sure, I think the board could recommend that.
Well, I'd like to make that recommendation, so.
Mike, would you like to add not just inspections, but inspections, repairs?
And repairs, yeah, yeah, yeah. Monthly maintenance and its inspection and repairs.
By whom?
By the developer, by.
But who's gonna enforce? How are we gonna know if they actually do that monthly?
Well, it's pretty obvious. Well, I, yeah, you're right, yeah.
I, I can understand if one of them has fallen off, that there's an easy way, but otherwise, like, they could just say we're doing it.
Yeah, well, we would assume they would get repaired.
Yeah.
Now, when you say maintenance too, does that mean the ground maintenance too?
No, I, I think we're looking at the actual apparatus.
Because I know I've been around quite a few of them too, and there's a lot of trees that are dead. They don't repair them.
Indeed, but that, that's a condition. They're supposed to replace those trees annually, the dead trees. It's already a condition of their.
I would think that would be part of the maintenance.
Indeed, but that's annual.
It's already spelled out in the conditions though.
So I guess my thought is, does it make more sense to, if there's not one of the heads on there, that they have thirty days or whatever it is to repair it, so we're a little bit more specific on what we want them to do? Cause I think that's, I think that's your end goal, isn't it, is to make sure there's not those heads that are missing or falling off?
Right, yep, that's our end goal.
Does it make more sense to, to call that out specifically, instead of relying on them to do the, the maintenance and telling us that they're doing it when they're not?
I like the idea that you put the thirty days on that, because if we have to write a letter, then there's something that we can tie it to. You have thirty days, and thirty days later, we can go check and if it's not done.
And I don't know, for this industry, I'm not familiar enough with it. Is thirty days enough for them to do this? Seeing a few heads shake, so it sounds like thirty days would be, but.
How do we word that?
So inspection and repair of panel array within thirty days of, what'd you call it?
Yep, something about noticing that, that panel has fallen off. I, um, a, a missing panel, a broken panel visually, I, that, that's where I don't know, when I'm not familiar with the industry. To me, I think.
Thirty days of it being determined that, um...
First complaint?
What were you saying?
Thirty days of the first complaint. You know, they have to have it fixed. If someone sees it.
So, in the packet for this specific solar farm, on their operation and maintenance, it says that seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year basis, and will be monitored remote by computer to monitor for any problems that a array may have. So it sounds like the experts wanna get up, are these monitored off-site? These, in a...
Maybe, maybe the applicant could help kind of expand on this.
Yeah.
It's their solar farm, and, so, we wanna ensure that they're visually in there, operating properly. Um, so maybe the applicant can provide a little additional insight on that.
We'll have the applicant speak to that. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Patrick Dulseth, and I am the Vice President of Project Development for Sunvest Solar with an address of five forty-nine West Randolph Street in Chicago, Illinois. Um, yeah, so, uh, the, the, uh, these are all monitored remotely, uh, through a computer, and we certainly would be able to tell, um, if any one of the modules or any one of the inverters, you know, is, is not producing, um, to the extent of the damage, we wouldn't know until we went out there. Was it, you know, a storm rolled through and this particular panel or series of panels had hail, you know, we'd have to go out and make that inspection. But, you know, twenty-four seven, uh, we do monitor all of the, all of our, um, solar arrays throughout the country, um, you know, on a computer. So, um, you know, when it comes to, um, you, you know, we, we wouldn't know if something, quote, fell off. You know, we, we could tell it's not producing, but I, you know, we wouldn't be able, so, you know, we would, um, that's the first indication, if it's not producing, then we would have to send, uh, our maintenance crew out there to figure out what the problem is. Again, hail damage, did it really fall off or something like that? And then we would go through the pro- And then we would go through the process of, um, you know, trying to fix that or replace that panel or, or series of panels. Yeah, and I can't speak for the ones, um, that are being mentioned here where they're for, for many, many weeks or months, why, you know, somebody has not repaired something that's fallen off. You know, I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, but, um, you know, I think all developers get paid on the production of the electricity that they're producing, and it's in their best interest to, to fix, you know, swap out the modules or fix the modules so they can get back up to the maximum production for the facility.
So from your experience, when you find one that's faulty, how long does it take to fix it?
Well, i- i- it depends on what the problem is. If it's, you know, if it's a matter of, um, just swapping out a panel, you know, it'd probably take, it depends on if we have, um, you know, uh, spare panels, whi- which we do, but, you know, if, if it's like twenty or thirty of them and we only have fifteen, then we'll, you know, we'll replace them, but then we would have to order replacement panels and things like that. I mean, um, but for a, a larger, major issue, um, you know, it could, it could take ordering equipment, you know, which could be more than thirty days depending on how many we're ordering or what type of equipment is. But, you know, it's certainly in our best interest to, again, fix them as quickly as we can so we can get that production back up. Because we, we have thresholds that we have to meet, uh, to the local utility.
So is it reasonable, let's say that there was, to use your words, thirty panels gone, twenty panels gone, to remove the damaged panels? Because that's really where the eyesore comes from, is that they look like they're in disrepair. So could you remove those without damaging the brackets that hold them?
Yeah, sure, I mean, each...
They sit empty.
Well, yeah, they, um... Uh, that's a good question because behind, you know, each panel's connected to the one next to it.
Correct.
It's kind of daisy-chained. So I th- I think the answer would be, yeah, you could take out the panels, but then you would have to connect, you know, the, the two on either end of the, the vacant spot. And so, you know, there's, um, wiring and electrical things that you would have to do to, to replace that. I, I would hesitate to, I, I would have to get back to you to, to officially, you know, give you a, you know, an answer on, on how we would address that situation if there was, you know, multiple panels in a row. You know, do we take them out just for visual aesthetic? Or, you know, do we keep them, you know, quote, "plugged in" so the electricity can at least run through them even though that particular unit isn't producing? You know, all, all the, all the electricity is running through the circuit that's plugged in behind it. So I, I guess I don't have a, uh, operations answer for you on that.
So you're saying it's like a Christmas, string of Christmas lights?
Sure, yes.
It'll continue to work with a bad head, but you pull one of those out, and all of a sudden now everything after it is not going to work anymore?
Uh, unless you connect, yeah.
Unless you, yeah.
Unless you make that connection to the next one.
But it really does address the issue of them not being in the brackets and laying on the ground. Or, I mean, they would have to be up and in to be transmitting.
Do you have maintenance crews locally?
Yeah, no, we would, yeah. So, so we, we have a main, we would have a maintenance contract for this project with, uh, several of the other projects we have here in the state of Minnesota. Uh, we hire, you know, local electrician to, to be on call, you know. And typically, you know, they get out there within four, uh, twenty-four hours of, of us noticing a, a problem or, or something, we would, you know, send the maintenance crew out there within twenty-four hours.
So do you feel the, the, the thirty-day requirement is too restrictive or...
No, I, I think it's reasonable, um, you know, so if, if something happened and, you know, for some reason, we didn't notice that there was a panel down, which I, I don't foresee that scenario, but sa- say there was, and, and somebody reported it to the planning department, and they gave us notice that, you know, you have a couple of panels missing. Y- y- yes, that thirty days, assuming that we would have, you know, spare parts to, to fix that, I think is a sufficient amount of time. What, um, you know, I think what would happen if we couldn't get it done in thirty days, I think the conversation would be had with the developer and the planning staff to say, hey, you know, we get that, it's thirty days, but, you know, realistically, it's going to be like fifty because we have to order the equipment, it's coming, and, you know, can we, um, you know, can we get an extension on that? But at least the, the purpose of this thirty days notice is to let us know. And, and even if we can't get it done, you know, some relief, you know, there's a legitimate reason why we can't get it done, you know, again, due to ordering equipment. You know, get, getting, you know, a, a new series of panels, um, brought in, you know. Ha- having that flexibility to, um, to work with staff, if thirty days isn't going to be enough, would be greatly appreciated.
And I think that's something, if, if it wasn't within thirty days, I mean, it might be a request that, hey, you need to send us like the order or the shipping report, whatever the case is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we would, yeah, we would certainly have justification to ask for more, and, and we would provide you with, with that reason why.
Like you said, like last year, we had a couple of big hailstorms go through. If we have a major hailstorm, you lose half of these panels. I don't think we can expect you to do it in thirty days. But at least you can say, hey, they're, they're ordered, and here's an estimate.
Right, and we, yeah.
It's still addressed at least.
As, uh, Ms. Wataš...
Yes.
Is, is the county still having problems with, uh, changes in ownership of these facilities?
Um, we haven't had any for a while. This is the first one. So, um, we're, at least we're not made aware of it. I'm not guaranteeing it's not happening, but we haven't been made aware of many changes recently.
Thank you. Other question?
So it says, so when we talk about people being frustrated or upset by the, the appearance, it says signage, signage and emergency contacts. So like at a lot of our gravel pits, we have, you know, contact so-and-so. What, what is the signage about? Is that what it says?
Emergency contact on the gate.
They have...
Cool.
They have signs at the gates and a phone number.
But it not necessarily to, it would be to the owner, correct? Not necessarily to the county?
Correct, the owner of the...
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Now, are you aware, I'm assuming we're going to ch- add a nineteenth condition? How are we going to word that?
So I, I put down inspection and repair of panel array within thirty days of identified disrepair. So it could be anything.
I like that.
So the disrepair kind of gives you lots of leeway.
Maybe add a sentence to the end, if it can't be done in thirty, thirty days, a reason has to be, written reason or something like that has to be provided and, and an estimated date.
And agreeable to the planning administrator, and that gives us that option.
All the extending, yeah. For necessary.
Yep.
What I said and what he said.
Ike, I got a one question.
Sir?
Off, off-base with probably the rest of the board here, but, uh, a while ago, we, some people applied for a solar farm here, and there was, uh, a company come in here and, uh, correct me because I probably got some of this wrong, but they were encouraging, uh, farm animals, sheep grazing to be done around these solar panels. And, uh, to me, uh, I think it's a great idea.
Economics.
Uh, is, have you ever done that in the other panels? Is there any interest in it? Is just, is that just, uh, barfs or, I hate to call it that, but, I mean, to me, it's, if you can double-dip on that property and, and keep it as rural as we can, partially rural, it's an advantage to everyone. So it's, have you ever done it? Have you heard of it? Have there been people interested or...
Yes, we, we've certainly, we certainly heard of it. There are some markets or some states that, um, have a, a different way of approving these, and, and if, if developers commit to what they call agrivoltaics or, um, something like that through their scoring system, they would, you know, be able to do it. You know, Sunvest Solar, uh, we have not, um, while we've looked at it, we have not implement, implemented that type of maintenance for the, the prairie grass or the pollinator habitat. But, uh, we, we certainly, um, you know, we, we've looked at, we, we just haven't implemented it. It's, you know, that's a short answer to your question.
Are you aware of the, or are you able to comply with the now nineteen conditions?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any other questions for the applicant? What are the wishes of the board?
Do we have to open up the...
Oh, I got to open a public hearing here. Oh, yeah.
You do.
You do. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve with the, the nineteen conditions?
Is there a second? All second. We will go through the findings of facts. Uh, Mr. Glines.
All right, you ready? Again, these are staff's recommendations. You can adopt them or change them as you wish. Number one, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted or substantially diminish and impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
The proposed location of the solar farm is in an existing agricultural field. The closest adjoining neighborhood house is approximately two hundred feet to the south across County Highway eight. There are three existing solar farm locations that have been approved, but not all have been constructed to the east of the proposed solar farm site. Remaining land adjacent to the solar farm is all agriculturally farmed properties. The perimeter of the solar farm will be planted with trees to reduce visual impacts to adjoining properties.
All right, thank you. Number two, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normally, normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area.
Yes, the IUP will be valid for thirty-five years. If the property owner, property owner no longer wants solar panels, the infrastructure can be removed, and the site can either go back to farming or be utilized for renewal use. The property, the solar farm is proposed on, is zoned agricultural district and could not be subdivided to less than forty-acre properties under current zoning regulations.
Number three, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided.
Yes, driveway access to Ninetieth Avenue Southeast will be from a driveway entrance that will need to obtain Clear Lake Township approval and permit. Utility lines necessary to transfer the electricity exist adjacent to the property.
Number four, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient upstream parking and loading space to serve the proposed use.
Yes, there is plenty of parking available on this property needed for construction and operations.
And number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, construction of the site will cause noise and additional traffic. This will be temporary. Once the solar farm construction is complete, traffic will be minimal and consists of company vehicles inspecting the panels on a weekly slash monthly basis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to clarify, number one, all three have been constructed to the east.
Been moved, seconded, and the findings have been recited. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and, uh, you'll be, recommended you be here on April fifteenth at nine o'clock for your issue to be held in front of the board.
Very good, thank you very much. Thank you to the board, thank you to the staff.
Agenda item number four. MNCSG two zero one nine dash six seven LLC, Harry Monk Omen and De-Mon Koba requesting an interim use permit for solar farm. PID two zero dash zero zero two two three dash four two zero one, section twenty-three in Clear Lake Township, zoned agricultural, orderly annexation zone three. Mr. Glines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, MNCSG two, that was a nineteen dash sixty-seven LLC. This is also an existing solar farm that has been brought before the planning commission. Two thousand and twenty-three, and with an amendment in two thousand and twenty-four. Two thousand and twenty-four was for the alteration of project footprint and landscaping plan to alter the layout and add trees around the perimeter of the solar. Since a variance to have no trees was denied. So they did apply for a variance to have no trees around the solar farm, that was denied. So they had to amend their, uh, IUP to show the new trees. Clear Lake Township, they agreed with the tree, uh, Township agrees with the tree species change. We agree that no trees are needed between two solar farms, although we thought that the two fences needed to be within two hundred feet or less of each other. Planning commission should ask about maintenance on solar panels or who is responsible for the maintenance. We'll get into that with, uh, this applicant as well. MNDOT did not have any issues from, uh, their standpoint for the change of trees. They did provide comments for the original IUP in March fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three regarding the access. So what they're here for is to amend their vegetation. So they would like to change the tree species. Uh, one of the conditions of approval from twenty twenty-four was that eastern red cedar trees need to be planted around the perimeter of the entire solar farm. And with the Excel Energy, uh, solar farm, Mark, can you pull that up? The first error. So where that white, uh, marking is to the east, that is where Excel is proposing their, uh, solar farm. So the applicant is requesting to not, to not have trees on the east side of the, uh, the solar farm. It has been constructed, um, and so we're not changing any condition as far as the lease agreement or the lease, the timing of the lease. Uh, they are just specifically asking for, to change their, uh, tree plan from eastern red cedar to a mix of Norway pine and white pine. Uh, the reasoning for this request is also outlined in a letter provided by their landscaper. You want to scroll down, Mark? Keep going. Right there. And so with that, we are just recommending the change be to condition number twelve, that we would strike through eastern red cedar and add Norway pine and white pine and on the northwest and south of the solar farm as shown on updated site plan packet attachment B. Trees must be planted staggered in two rows. In each row, the trees may be planted no more than sixteen feet apart. So all trees on the property must be maintained in waters as necessary for the duration of the permit, and any dead trees must be replaced on a yearly basis. So that is the only, uh, change to the conditions. I'm assuming we'll be adding one based off the last IUP for maintenance. But, uh, other than that, if you have any questions, uh, I'll answer any, or the applicant is in the...
Any questions for staff? Is the applicant this here? Please state your name and, uh, address, please.
My name is Brian Keenan. I'm senior project developer with New Energy Equity, twenty-six seventy Patton Road, Roseville, five-five-one-one-three.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. With this being only on eighteen acres, what is the projected output of this solar array?
This is a, a one-megawatt garden, so, you know, annual output is about two-point-two million kilowatt-hours.
But it, on eighteen acres, it, it can still be a one-megawatt?
We're only occupying approximately eight acres of that parcel as well. I mean, there's, uh, the bulk of it to the west is forested, and, you know, we're, we're occupying a small sliver of it. We're, the community solar program was limited to one megawatt back when this was permitted with, or, you know, when the applications were put through with Excel.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sir, ma'am.
I just wanted to check with the applicant. The trees have to be at least six feet tall. You, I think I saw something in your, um, letter from your landscaper. He had, they had mentioned some shorter trees, if I read it correctly. But just to be clear, the conditions are six feet tall.
Correct, and that's part of the issue with the eastern red cedars is they would come as a variety of heights, not specifically six or better...
Okay.
Feet tall, so...
Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Again, uh, the... Again, the Clear Lake Town Board was requesting or suggesting that if the distance between the two solar installations exceed two hundred feet, then, then the trees would be required. Otherwise, less than two hundred feet, the trees would be waived as far as the town board was concerned.
If I could address that, you know, after the town meeting, I thought about that and reviewed it with our staff. If you look at the nature of this neighborhood, that, you know, Highway twenty-four is at quite an angle there.
Correct.
The Excel project is quite a bit north of ours. Yeah, anybody coming, you know, up the road from Interstate ninety-four is never going to see, you know, anything but trees from our site. And if you're driving the opposite way, the Excel site is going to be blocking, even if you're two hundred feet or three, I don't know what the exact measurement it was. It's going to be a glance, you know, glancing view, if anything. The Excel site does not propose any trees or any screening along the road frontage there. So there's going to be an enormous visual impact in that area.
Coney and the township don't have a call in the Excel operation.
I understand. I understand. The final point being too, that this area and the, you know, when you look at the comprehensive plan, it's cited as being, you know, agricultural, right, where our project is, but then commercial and industrial throughout the rest of the neighborhood there. And if you look north of our project, there's, you know, a mix of commercial buildings with an array of equipment and odd supplies, you know, laying out in the yards and things, so. The visual aesthetics from our eight-acre project are, I don't think are going to be phenomenally impacted by what's already in and are going to be in the neighborhood.
Well, I know the board didn't have a problem with the change in vegetation. It's just that whether or not it could be waived was the question. Another state comment, if I could. Packet attachment F dash one-two. F twelve. Yep. Now, the statement semi, beg your pardon. Semi-annual system performance report, visual and mechanical inspection. I believe township would prefer to see that once every month as opposed to once every six months. Again, the same issue that we were previously discussing as far as maintenance or repairs, if you will. So.
The semi-annual system report we do is a comparison with our actual production versus what our forecast was versus on weather that has happened versus, you know, I think it's a little more intricate than a simple maintenance-type inspection plan. And it's made more for, you know, forecasting production of the system and what have you. The previous discussion about maintenance, I think there's a couple of points that were, that weren't mentioned is-
Good.
To have a panel fall off is a phenomenally rare occurrence. You know, these are torqued on and they're, you know, they're, they're done under such scrutiny, and they're inspected multiple times throughout the production of. At the township meeting, it seemed like there was more of a concern about ones that the rows weren't all rotating at the same rate or things, which is a whole different issue, but-
Those were tracking systems, yeah.
Yeah. If a panel falls off a system, there's, it's, I've never seen one of our systems do it short of a, you know, impact from a tractor or some kind of, you know, storm or something like that. The system itself, the panels run DC, and that gets fed into the inverter, converts it into AC. As the previous applicant was talking about, there's rows of panels that are strung together. So normally seventeen panels are better. If any one of those panels has a short or some kind of electrical failure, the inverter shuts off that whole bank or that whole row if it's a significant one. There's, you know, circuit breakers are throughout the entire system for safety and through, you know, by National Electric Code. So there's not a safety issue even if a panel were to fall down. It's enclosed by seven-foot fence all around, so there should not be any human interaction with it as well. So just to be clear that, you know, that it's not a public safety issue.
Well, we've observed panels on the ground.
Okay.
So.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but-
You know, well, yours is brand new, but-
But it's also, at that same time, no member of the public could get in into that area where that panel is on the ground, or shouldn't be able to.
Indeed. I won't argue that. The one, the one I've got in mind is actually enclosed with a six-foot chain link with three strands of barb.
Okay.
So it would take a certain amount of effort to get in there.
Right.
Nevertheless, it's not being maintained. That's, that's the township's concern.
Yep. I agree it's not being maintained, but it's, you know, it's not a public risk at that point either.
Mr. Chair, you were inquiring about any fire hazards?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to ask the applicant about a fire hazard?
That's another good point.
And so that's my previous comment about the, you know, there's safeties built within these. The, if there's ever a fault within an individual panel or a string of panels, you know, there's automatic shutdowns within the system. And so we, and we monitor that remotely. When those, when those systems, you know, safeties fire off or activate, we're notified immediately, you know, at our command center. And if there's a significant issue, we'd be on-site. Most of the time, it shuts off that and it ends the, you know, the event. And our normal maintenance crew would be out and repair that, you know, within their normal schedule.
And again, I'll ask, have you got maintenance crews locally?
Right out of our office in Roseville, yes.
Okay.
Yep, we've got a specific division of our company called Energy Support Services that all we do is, is operations and maintenance.
Well, I mean, this is just a proposed change in vegetation. Can we add another condition, the same one we added on the last one?
Actually, I don't know that we can. I think we can only address the issues that are before us.
Yeah.
I don't think we can make other changes.
Understood. Understood. Any other questions for either the staff or the applicant?
I've got, I'd like to clarify the trees. I think, I think, I want to be careful how we do this because I don't want to set a precedence for, because of another close farm maybe doing some invert blocking. I don't want to set a precedent, and we may go down the wrong road. And if I didn't have to do it because of this, follow what I'm saying? So I think if it's part of the requirements to do it other than, if it's supporting, we should do it.
And to clarify, we do, Lynn can clarify, we do look at it case by case. So when a solar farm comes in, we look at the existing vegetation or what's proposed, and then, you know, make a decision on that end of it. You know, it's just, not just, I don't want trees here or here.
I don't want somebody saying, well, this guy didn't have to do it, is my point.
And I don't recall knowing honestly what the separation distance was between solar farms in the past. As long as we knew there was a solar farm directly adjacent to, we, to the best of my recollection, did not require trees to be planted between the two different solar farms. Because at some point, with height requirements, but, you know, whether those were at two hundred feet or those were at one hundred feet, I don't believe that issue came up previously that I recall.
The, one of the board members, Clear Lake Town Board members, has got quite a bit of his property tied up in the Excel solar farms. And he was quite surprised when they actually started construction where the fences landed because the area he was assuming would be used for solar farms wasn't. So that's where the issue of the two hundred feet came up because, you know, we don't know where Excel's actual installation is going to end up. So that's where the two hundred foot came in.
Right. No, I just think it's interesting we haven't had that issue come up specifically. What was the distance in the past? I don't recall that, you know. It's a good question, though.
Any other questions for staff or?
I do have one. It says trees to the northwest and south. Doesn't, isn't the west kind of already covered with trees? Is there a reason that we're requiring?
I think that was, that was discussed at the original application. And I think there is one solar farm, I believe it's in Haven, where the tree requirement was waived because of existing vegetation.
We kind of got away from that, you know, you don't know if those existing trees die, then who has to replace it? This way, we know that solar company is responsible to make sure the trees exist all the way around their solar facility. At one point, I know it was also an issue where an adjoining property owner had very thick, heavy tree coverage. But really, if they wanted to cut down all their trees, they should be able to do so. So this puts the onus on the solar company, and I believe that's why we've left it the way that we have it on this one.
And that is exactly what happened in Haven.
Okay.
Well, there's plenty of tree coverage. Okay, that's gone.
Right.
And that also happened with, when Green Acres went out and started taking down their-
Yep.
Their wind blocks, wind rooms.
Anything else? What are the wishes of the board? Thank you.
Public hearing.
Oh, public hearing.
That's okay.
Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve with the twenty findings, conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded, we will proceed with the findings of fact.
All right, Bruce, you ready? Number one, that the interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the immediate vicinity.
Yes, the location of the solar farm is in the west corner of an existing agricultural field. There's an existing buffer of trees approximately two hundred feet wide to the west of the solar farm. There is an existing residential subdivision to the west and south of the property solar farm. Excel Energy will be constructing a solar farm to the east. Trees will be planted in the northwest and south portion of that solar farm. The closest home to south of the solar farm is approximately two-hundred-seventy-five feet away. The closest home to the west of the solar farm is approximately three-hundred-twenty-five feet away.
Thank you. Number two, that the establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area.
Yes, the IUP will be valid for thirty-five years. The property owner no longer wants, if the property owner no longer wants solar panels on the infrastructure, can be removed, and the site can either go back to farming or be utilized for a new use. The property, the solar farm, is proposed on, is zoned agricultural district and could not be subdivided to less than forty acre properties under current zoning regulations.
Number three, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided.
Yes. It is utilizing existing driveway for the solar farm to the south to Minnesota State Highway twenty-four. Utility lines necessary to transfer the electricity exist adjacent to the property.
Number four, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use.
Yes, there's plenty of parking available on this property needed for construction and operations.
Number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations, that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result.
Yes, construction of the site will cause noise and additional traffic. This will be temporary. Once the solar farm construction is complete, traffic will be minimal and consist of company vehicles inspecting the panels on a weekly, monthly basis.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded, and the findings read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you again, and it would be prudent to be here on the April fifteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. Your issue will be coming up. Okay, agenda item number five. Again, Mr. Glines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we are proposing to add accessory dwelling units to the zoning ordinance. Something that's been discussed quite a bit. This is something that we get inquiries from the residents quite often. And so we are excited to present it. So with this, the planning and zoning department is proposing to amend the zoning ordinance to establish accessory dwelling units, ADU. As a permitted use in the general and agricultural zoning district, ADU is a self-contained residential unit with its own living room, kitchen, and bathroom. ADUs are permanent installations that are legally part of a larger property that includes a standard single-family house. Housing is designed to be flexible to meet the family needs and can generate rental income for the homeowners. These units may be located inside the principal building on a lot or may be located in a detached building on the same parcel. The guidance to establish ADUs came from the Sherwin County twenty-forty Comprehensive Plan Policy One. It is the county's policy to provide opportunities for accessory dwelling units. The county should develop and adopt an ADU ordinance. That is from the Comprehensive Plan. A current housing study found that Sherwin County will need fifty-two-hundred new housing units in the upcoming years to meet demand. The Planning and Zoning Office receives regular inquiries about ADUs specifically for family members to be able to live on their property in a separate structure. The images below show the potential ways that ADUs can be constructed on a property. There are two general classifications of accessory dwelling units. Attached ADUs are those that are either located within the principal structure, such as in the basement or attic, or those that are in addition that is part of a principal structure expansion. Detached ADUs are those that are independent from the main dwelling or like located in accessory structure on the site. So, as I mentioned, we get regular inquiries. The inquiries that we've received are specifically for family members to come live on their property. We started getting regular calls during COVID when people wanted to take their parents or family members out of a senior living facility and have them live with them. That was obviously five years ago. We had not really thought of an ADU ordinance at that time. We did hear that neighboring counties such as Isani and Stearns had accessory dwelling units. And so this is something that we have been researching and prepping for. But again, coming out of the twenty-forty Comprehensive Plan, this was a policy that we wanted to get implemented. We did send it out to the townships at the end of January so that we were hoping that we would get them on all of February. We didn't get all of the comments back from the townships. Some of them, we're going to be hearing them in, in March. But the ones I did get back are Big Lake Township, Clear Lake Township, Haven Township, Livonia Township, and Palmer Township. As you can see, each township had their own comments for different reasons. But other than that, we are here to answer any questions that you may have on it.
Any questions of staff? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak at this, on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Is there anyone here to speak on this issue?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I think Ms. Larson got the second, so it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will go with our-
Would we like to go through the ordinance itself, or have you had a chance to review it? Do you have any comments, or?
I like it.
Okay. I just wanted to speak on Livonia Township. You had some thorough, you know, comments on like temporary housing, you know, for family members. We do have an ordinance for family members that need help. Temporary housing for family-
We do have an ordinance for family members that need help, temporary housing for family members. So we'd have to get like a doctor's note stating that they needed help, and so it would be an interim use permit, and that's more of a temporary housing, where they would bring in like a, you know, manufactured home or something, but it's not on a permanent foundation, so that once, unfortunately, something happens to that family member, then that gets removed, so it's not permanent. So these accessory dwelling units would be, you know, on permanent foundations.
And we're not looking at getting rid of that other option either. That still could stay.
That's a, that's a good one for the temporary.
Yep.
Because that's, that building standards are a lot less than what these would be.
So there is, so one of the things that Livonia had mentioned, is there a way to control it? You've already got that mechanism in place.
Or the construction, but not for like rentals. We couldn't control it. And we, I did speak with Michelle Mullen, with the assessor's office, and their biggest concern was, A, it's homesteaded, and B, it can't be separated from that single-family parcel, so. And that is outlined in the ordinance.
Yep.
And I also noticed Haven Township had commented that they wanted it to possibly be non-homesteaded. One of the concerns staff had was that if it's non-homesteaded, now you could have two rental units and nobody that lives on the property that actually owns the property. And so we had concerns that it could cause more issues, whereas if somebody lives there and they're overseeing what's happening on that property and it's homesteaded, that that may alleviate some of the issues that could potentially come up. And so that's why it's being, that's one of the reasons why it's being proposed as homesteaded, just to clarify that issue.
And I can also say that any inquiry we ever had, not one of it was for them to build it as a rental. It was all family members that we've gotten inquiries.
You know what, I didn't think about the rental part of it until we had our annual meeting, and we were looking at the levy, and there was people that were genuinely concerned with the amount of money that they are paying in taxes and upkeep and everything else, and they're having a hard time. And this could be a possibility to prolong their existence in the home that they, that they lived in for so long. So, for that reason, I would not be opposed to the rental part of the ordinance.
Yeah, and like Lynn had mentioned, if it's homesteaded, you own the house, so if they're bad renters, then it's on you, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Mitch, how does this go about for appraised or evaluation on the property? If we improve or add on some square footage, we're going to have a higher assessed value.
Yeah, they're going to assess it as a second house.
As a second house. Does that affect the, we'll call it the homestead credit, that has changed a lot in the last however many years? Would it put someone currently with a homestead credit out of range because of the increased valuation?
No, it'll continue, it has to be homesteaded, so it'll continue, one of them has to be homesteaded.
But I mean homestead credit.
Credit, I don't know that answer as far as the homestead credit. Speaking with the assessor, basically, Michelle had mentioned that it's, A, the values are going to go up, because you're going to have a second house, and as long as it's homesteaded. That's all I got from the assessor's office. I don't know about the homestead credit.
Right, because the homestead credit is low enough to where a lot of homes don't qualify anyways, but the ones who do, if they added something like this, they would go over. And I don't think, I don't think people are aware of that.
I think it's right around $400,000.
I think you're right.
I thought it was more than that.
Haven't seen it for years.
I thought it was five.
But that, that would be my concern, is that if somebody goes about this, would they be made aware of that?
And I think that is one thing we will let them know, because when, whenever somebody wants to apply for an interim use permit for a business, they say, what are my taxes going to be? You know, because it's going to be taxed as commercial. We talk to, tell them to talk to the assessors to see what that implication could be.
That's, that's a provision I can certainly live with, because we get people come in at equalization, and I didn't know that, or what happened, or I used to, common phrases, I think everybody here hears them, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number, number three, must match main dwelling's appearance.
So that's for platted developments. We want to keep the integrity of the platted developments. So a lot of these that we've gotten inquiries on are in San Diego Township, Palmer Town, I mean, the bigger parcels, the ones that they make the most sense. Well, we, you know, we're looking at it going, okay, well, people in platted developments are going to want to do it too. How do we keep the integrity of that development? So if it's a detached, it has to resemble the main dwelling, unless it's in an accessory building, you know, like a, like a second floor of an accessory, then it doesn't have to match. It would just appear as an accessory building. But if it's a standalone, you know, we want it to resemble the main dwelling.
And so there's proportion size too. So if you're thinking about lots, majority of our lots are two and a half acres, not to exceed 1,000 square feet on lots under five acres. So it's keeping it also, again, in proportion in the platted development. So we did think that there was a distinction between a residential subdivision of two and a half acres and a 40-acre site out in Palmer Township.
Any other questions or comments? What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I would make a motion to recommend this being approved to the county commissioners.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded?
Butch, did you have something?
Third.
Oh.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. We're excited, we really are excited about this. We, the residents are, we get so many calls, and they're going to be very happy when we let them know they can do it.
My family farm was kept intact probably for another 15 years, because my sister took it over and my mom paid rent.
We're a people that are this new generation that wants their family, parents to come with. And, you know, this is a great thing, because not, just because we put it in ordinance doesn't mean everyone's going to do it, but it gives them an option to do it. So, thank you.
Yeah, nice job. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Ike.